Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission to Order for Monday, June 20th, 2016. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Knott.
Here.
Commissioner Millsark. Commissioner Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Urban. Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Hopewell.
Present. May we have a motion to excuse Commissioners Urban and Millsark?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Anderson.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Cooney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. For our opening ceremony this evening, we will have an invocation by Pastor Ken Smeeter of the Kalamazoo Missionary Church. I ask that you stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening Pastor.
Father God, we just, uh, we just come to you tonight thanking you for, uh, just your presence in our midst since we met last time. Father, there's been another tragedy in Kalamazoo and one in Florida. And Father, we're mindful of those families and friends and people we're aware of tonight that are still reeling and hurting from things that happened in our midst. I thank you for this commission, Lord. I thank you for the responsibility here in Kalamazoo. I thank you for the leadership. I thank you, Father, that you speak to all of our hearts. So I prayed just tonight simply that you would convict us, you would challenge us, you would give these men and women wisdom. And even as we have discussion in this community, Father, that you'll continue to be ever-present and will sense, um, your heart for us, your love for us unconditionally, and your mercy and grace. And we ask that tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, welcome everyone. We have one proclamation this evening. I'll have, head to the podium and Commissioner, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Cooney will handle this proclamation.
Celebrating 150th anniversary of Temple Ben Israel, my bad.
Nice.
How are ya?
Okay.
Welcome.
Okay. Whereas Temple Ben Israel has provided a welcoming community for anyone who sought out a place to learn and worship since its founding on October 1st, 1865. Some of their first actions were to acquire land for burial grounds, which is still in use today, and to draft bylaws which were signed by each of the 20 founders on January the 7th, 1866. And whereas services and the religious school were initially held at Rabbi Simon Rosenberg's home, in 1873, the congregation purchased a house at 152 East South Street. The home became the rabbi's residence and the first temple and school were built. The temple was dedicated on January 29th, 1875. And whereas in 1910, the decision was made to sell the old facility and build a more modern one, which would eventually be located at 621 South Park Street. During this time, the church was under the leadership of Rabbi Thurman, who would become the first rabbi to participate in the inauguration of an American president. And whereas after Rabbi Thurman's departure, maintaining a consistent rabbi was a struggle for the congregation and the temple eventually had to be sold until a new temple was established. High holidays and occasionally Friday evening services were held at the People's Church. And whereas in 1962, the congregation rented a farmhouse at 6318 Portage Road and the first Shabbat services were held there, performed by Rabbi Waterman. From that day, the congregation continued to grow and would be one of the first congregations to have a female student rabbi. And whereas in 2014, the congregation secured the leadership of its current rabbi, Matthew Zurek, Temple Ben Israel's first full-time religious leader since 1969. And whereas this temple was a beacon of hope for the first 20 families in 1865 and it still serves as a vessel for hope, understanding, and belief for many in the Kalamazoo area. Now therefore, on behalf of the 51st City Commission and Mayor Bobby J. Hopewell, we hereby recognize and congratulate the Temple Ben Israel's congregation for their resilience, strength, and endurance over the past 150 years.
Hello, I'm Rabbi Matt Zurek. I'm the rabbi at Temple Ben Israel, also a mem-, uh, citizen of Kalamazoo. As much as Kalamazoo has shaped the Jewish community, and it has greatly, the Jewish community has helped to shape Kalamazoo. You see names of our founding members all over the city, Rosenberg, Dezenberg, Lilienfeld, the Israel family. It is such an honor to, to be able to stand here and mark this occasion that very few congregations are able to, to honor. We are, we predate the movement to which we belong. We are proud to be a founding member of our movement and proud to have been, uh, a piece of Kalamazoo's history and are thrilled to continue to help shape Kalamazoo for years to come.
I do want to say, uh, real quick, that one of the, I just found out, one of the founding members of the congregation is Edward Dezenberg. And Edward Dezenberg is also the founder of Pretty Lake Vacation Camp, or Pretty Lake Camp. As you know, I'm a little bit biased towards the camp, just in, um, and we're celebrating our 100th year. So 150 years here, 100 years with Pretty Lake. As you said, the Jewish community has affected Kalamazoo in so many ways. And this gentleman gave summer camp free for children, all of our community, 50,000 children in fact. And that's a part of his legacy as the congregation is. So we are honored to have all of you here to celebrate this moment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we are now at Item C, adoption of the formal agenda. Are there any changes? Hearing none, anyone in the audience wanting to speak on the consent agenda, that's items under F. Items under F, that item will need to be moved to the regular agenda. If you have such an item, please indicate at this time. Hearing none, communications manager Ritzman.
None, Your Honor.
Thank you. Consent agenda, please.
We have the following six items presented for approval. First is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone 106 Thompson Street from Zone RS-5 Residential Single Dwelling District to Zone IC Institutional Campus District and schedule a public hearing for July 5th, 2016. Next is the acceptance of a donation, the amount of $60,000 from William Johnston for the Summer Youth Employment Program. Next is the designation of Financial Services Manager Melissa Fuller as the city's purchasing agent, effective immediately. Next is the approval of an amendment to the fireworks permit from the Kalamazoo Growlers to change the last display date of the season from Tuesday, July 26th to Friday, July 29th. Next are the approval of the following appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. First, the appointment of Adam Roth to the Community Development Action Advisory Committee as an at-large member for a term expiring on March 31st, 2017. And the reappointment of John Johnson to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term expiring on January 1, 2019. And the reappointment of Mika Phillips to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term expiring on January 1, 2017. And finally, the approval of the minutes from the City Commission meetings on April 18th, May 2, May 4, May 16, and June 6, 2016.
Thank you, Manager Ritzman. Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items 1 through 6 and authorize the city manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Anderson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Knott. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Commissioner Sykes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner's motion carried. Mr. Manager, you have a report this evening?
Yeah, I'd just like to extend congratulations to Melissa Fuller for her appointment this evening as the purchasing agent for the city. I'm sure she's gonna do great things and look forward to that. Also, I announced last week to the organization, and I'll announce formally this, tonight, the appointment of James Baker as the Director of Public Works. He's been filling that role as interim since, uh, March, late March, and decided to make it permanent. It seemed to be a great fit and we're looking forward to the great things he has for that department as well. So that's all I have.
I'd like to have you both stand so we can see, so citizens can see who you are. And we want to welcome you aboard. Congratulations. I know you've been aboard, but welcome you to your, your new positions and all the wonderful work that lies ahead for both of you. Congratulations.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, you have a report this evening?
No mayor.
Mr. Clerk?
No mayor.
Thank you very much. We're now at citizens comments. Any comments this evening from anyone in the audience? Please step to the podium. You'll have four minutes. Give us your name and whether you live within the city. And there is a sign-in sheet you can sign in after or before. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Corey Smith. I live, uh, 529 Ada Street, 500 Block of Ada. Um, I'm here today to, uh, to make sure no one's forgotten the 500th District of Ada Street. You know, it's still being so close to downtown Kalamazoo. Um, a few points that I wanted to point out to.
Can you move the microphone up just a little bit? There we go.
Right there. A few points I want to point out to, that, um, recently, within the last two, three years I lived there, 500 Block of Ada, fathers dealing with the city and the garbage, abandonment of houses, empty lots, and dump sites, drugs being sold, groups of peoples on the corners, all this, all, this is all types of hours and loud noise. As of today, I am the owner of 529 Ada Street and the leaseholder of 525 Ada. It's almost like the community had forgot about the 500 Block of Ada. Being so close to downtown, we would think that things would be more tight and more kept up clean. I lived here in Kalamazoo for over 21 years, from Chicago, Illinois. At 17, I was shot five times and I moved here in 95, looking for a better life and a better home for my family. I chose to have nine children and to raise my kids here in Kalamazoo has been wonderful for me. But within the last three years that I lived in Kalamazoo, Michigan, on the 500 Block of Ada, I wondered, have the city abandoned us? Fathers, the officers over there, I, I worked forth and hand-in-hand with them for the last three years. I've been down here numerous occasions to speak to the mayor and to complain about the noise and the drugs and the prostitution and the garbage and the activity in that area. Again, my name is Corey Smith. I live 529 Ada Street, Kalamazoo, Michigan. Moved my family here for a better life, been here 21 years. And I haven't seen, within the last three years, I've seen more and heard more than when I lived 17 years in Illinois. Thank you. You have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanting to address the commission this evening? Seeing no one, we are at Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Knott.
No comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sykes.
Um, I just wanted to thank Corey Smith for coming out and, and talking to us about, um, you know, what's going on in his neighborhood. And I always appreciate, um, you know, getting those perspectives so that we know where we are, um, where we need to be, um, and where our focus should be at. So I appreciate that. Uh, thanks so much for coming out. Um, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Anderson.
I, I would like to mention something that is so a matter of course for us that we just put it on the consent agenda. That was tonight, once again, we have a gentleman here in town who was for years and years and years contributed to help fund a summer program for youth here in town. I guess to us, we almost expect it now and I, I'm hoping that we don't ever consider it to be something that is just a, a par for the course. But we, it is an example of the fact that we do have people in town who care a great deal, not just about the city, but particularly young people in the city. And this is representative of that. It's, it's one small piece of everything we're trying to do. I couldn't agree more with the citizen who is here tonight in terms of people who care about neighborhoods and wanted to have good places for kids to grow up. That should be really our primary mission here in Kalamazoo. And I'm hoping that over the course of the next few months, as we keep talking about Imagine Kalamazoo, what we imagined for ourselves, and I very much hope that you, sir, will be participating in that, that we talk, uh, without limitation about what we hope for, for our children. Because when we base, uh, our principles on what we want for our kids here in town, it's gonna benefit everybody. That's, that's where it all starts. So, once again, back to tonight, I just wanted to recognize individual. This is from, uh, William Johnston here in town, who's contributing for this program. And thank him personally. And also, uh, remind everyone that, that now more than ever is a time for us to come together and really take advantage of this kind of thinking and, uh, work together to make Kalamazoo be the place that we want it to be. So, thank you, sir, for this donation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for coming down tonight. I'm sure that the city manager has heard that and that he will relay your message to the Chief of Public Safety and to the people in the different departments that could do something about this. Uh, and you mentioned about the gun violence thing. Certainly, this is an issue that's gotta be on all of our minds, especially after what happened last week in Orlando. But last week, last night, I was at an event in honor of Juneteenth and our sister Tiana, who was shot earlier, was there and honored. Um, and it was so painful to see how difficult it is for her to get around right now. And so we, we gotta keep fighting. And at the very time we're meeting now, right next door, there's a group that's, uh, working on trying to put this issue of gun violence on the public agenda. I wish we could do more in the city, but the state won't allow us to do any more than they're doing. So we have to keep pushing on the state, pushing on the federal government to do more to get reasonable ideas out there about, um, who gets a gun, about stopping the sale of some of these guns, which are meant only to kill people, and to do more to keep our community safe. So we're gonna keep working on that and I thank you for bringing out your, your neighborhood, your, your streets issues to our attention.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, Mr. Smith, a couple of things, but I'm gonna ask the manager. I know that, we know that Ada and that the challenges we have, Simpson, Ada, Clarence, Florence, that area. Um, you know, we're always dealing with certainly First Amendment rights and all of those pieces that come along with it. We have individuals that come to the podium telling us not to do anything in the area. So it's always this balancing act of what do you do, what can you do, what does law allow, what does it not allow? My question would be, you know, we used to have the broken windows effort. Um, I'm wondering, is there any sort of opportunities? And, and you open up the door when you say this, because there's other areas that are having challenges too. And we live about five blocks from, from Ada and Simpson area. But are there any other, um, full-court press sort of opportunities regarding that area? We know it's a challenge. It's been a challenge for years. We missed an opportunity about 10 years ago to get half the, the row apartments that are there gone, um, which I, and I don't, I want people to have places to live, but I would submit to you, not helpful at the moment. Um, so I guess what sort of efforts are going on? Or, um, can we turn up the volume on specifically regarding that area? Because we know it's been a constant problem, so it's not as if it's a new challenge. And I'm not sure if you have an answer, but feel free.
Well, it's interesting, because I, I did a ride-along Friday night and we rode, I rode in that area, um, the north side. And I can tell you, our officers are doing all they can relative to what goes on up there. I'm sure there's more that can be done and we'll certainly look into that. But, um, they, you know, they're aware of what's going on and are taking all the measures within their abilities to, to change that, uh, dynamic up there. And, um, so we'll, we'll stay on it and, um, work with the community. I know that's a big piece of this, getting the community to buy into make, making them say enough's enough and step up with us to, to hopefully put an end to this behavior and, and drive some of that out. So, um, we look forward to working with, with Mr. Smith and, and others in that endeavor.
And I'm certainly not trying to placate you. This is not a simple issue to solve or I'm hoping or thinking we would've solved it, you would've solved it, or whatever. However, I think us coming together and trying to determine, are there paths we haven't taken? Are there gaps that, that we can fill, um, that sort of thing? I think we've gotta challenge public safety. I think we challenge public works to all of the departments to work together to figure this out. And, and we do have a lot of folks that come and ask for stuff. With the bike accident, we're gonna have folks asking for complete streets. And we're gonna have someone asking for streetlights. And it's all of these things. And, um, you know, we have a pot this big and we got this many needs. How do we figure out a path forward? For all those things are vitally important, but we have to figure out how do we prioritize every single one of those items as we move forward. Let me say a couple of things. Uh, I don't think we were on this dais since the bike accident occurred. And a very, very sad, sad incident. I am, as a paramedic, I don't know that I could've handled being the first responder on that scene. This community continues to come together around these, uh, heinous and ugly events that are occurring. And, you know, as I sat here, I received a notice that, of course, our wonderful senate decided not to pass any of the four opportunities to deal with, uh, dealing with guns in our nation again. And, uh, I, I, I thought after Sandy Hook, they would've gotten the message that we should do something. Again, there's gonna be, I'll get emails tomorrow about wanting to take everyone's guns away. I don't wanna take everybody's guns away, but there are things we can do to be a safer nation. It's sad that, that once again, we could not find our way forward on that. I posted, uh, on Facebook, uh, about a week or week and a half ago about the death of Charles Warfield. And I mentioned Anna Witten and, um, certainly the cyclists that we lost. I omitted someone and, and I shouldn't have, Mr. Donegan, who passed in our custody. You know, very tragic event of his passing and it's under investigation by the department and, uh, send condolences to his family and all those folks that are grieving and healing from the loss of Mr. Donegan. And I'm, I was remiss in not mentioning that in, in that post. And so I'm wanting to make sure I do that here on the dais. I think that is, that ends my comments. Commissioners, we have a request to go into closed session, closed session to discuss labor negotiations. Is there a motion for, we will not be coming back for action. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Knott, supported by Commissioner Sykes. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sykes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Hopewell.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, motion, Commissioner's motion carried and the meeting is adjourned.